... requested by the VO Board would increase the self-assessment on hotel motel group to two and a half percent. The vacation rental businesses would remain unchanged at the current assessment of one and a half percent. The annual revenue received from the tourism district is currently just over $1 million. The increase is anticipated to be about $600,000, making the new sales and marketing budget for Visit Oceanside a little over 1.6 million. This change would go into effect on July 1st of this year. The new sales and marketing budget would be used to hire additional group sales team members, attract new citywide events when the occupancy rates are the lowest in the need period, October to May, and establish a sports commission to fund events that fill hotel rooms. This is the final council meeting where a resolution of modification can be adopted. As of June 12th, nine written protests were received, all from vacation rental owners who would not be impacted by this modification, however, they do represent slightly over one-half of 1%. That protested the modification, leaving over 98% of the assessed properties not protesting the modification. I wanted to ask the city clerk to let us know if tonight at this hearing, if she's received any additional protests?
We did not.
Perfect. With no additional protests, the number in the staff report stands at .51% protests, or under 1%. And staff requests that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the protest proceedings, and requests that the city council approve the modification to the management district plan of the Oceanside Tourism Marketing District, which will increase the self-assessment rate on hotel motels from one and a half percent to two and a half percent effective July 1st, 2019. Thank you very much. Take some questions, if you have any.
Are there any public?
I have eight people showing their support but do not wish to speak, and I have one person that wishes to speak, is Cindy Rocco.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Cindy Rocco, South Oceanside. I wanted to speak on this item because I'm concerned with the short-term rentals and the parity of hotels and short-term rentals as far as rules, regulations, taxes, fees, et cetera, especially since that is fulfilling tourism occupancy, anyway. So with that, I think that the short-term rentals, if they're not primary, then in there's secondary and above, two or more, that they should also get the 1% increase that the hotels are being asked to pay. So again, with any two or more, I mean, more than one STR that's not a primary, I think should definitely pay the extra 1%. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, I want to say-
We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Sorry. I just want to say, I'm really, really impressed that there were zero protests from hotel motel. I'm just, it's amazing. I know that we have more hotels coming on, I know we need to get the word out, marketing, that Oceanside is a place to come for vacation. I would really like to use some of that money for sand replenishment, but you know, we've got to get people here, so I'm going to go ahead and move adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Oh, your disclosures, from the beginning.
Motion passes by vote.
We'll go to item 52, which is a resolution for a time extension. Start with disclosures.
I've just had staff and the applicant.
Just staff.
Staff and the applicant?
No public.
Staff, applicant.
We'll open the public hearing. Mr. Nightingale, you're up.
Yeah. Good evening, members of the public, members of the council, honorable mayor. I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present Agenda Item 52. For the adoption of a resolution approving a one-year time extension for a previously approved ten-to-parceaux map development plan, two use permits and a variance and coastal permit to allow the development of a 52-unit condominium complex with a 1,028 square foot of ground floor commercial space located within the non-appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone at North Coast Highway and Costa Pacifica Way. Here's an image of where the site is located, like I said in the intro, it's right off of Costa Pacifica Way, off of North Coast Highway, directly west of the In-N-Out Burger Restaurant. The site is Zone 7B, which allows for recreational, commercial, and residential uses, and is surrounded by other 7B uses, with the exception of the In-N-Out Burger, which is Zone 6A. A little background on this, on October 2014, the Community Development Commission approved this project, which allowed for a 52-unit condominium complex. Since that time, they prepared some substantial conformity which allowed for minor modifications to the internal building design and some grade changes, which were compliant for fire and ADA requirements. The project was nearing expiration, so they went back to the Downtown Advisory Committee, where they were approved 8-1 for the two-year time extension. And on February 1st, 2017, this governing body approved the two-year time extension. Since that time, the project is near the expiration of the two-year time extension, so they had to go back to the Downtown Advisory back in April 2019, where they approved 7-0 for this proposed one-year time extension, which will be the last time extension that is allowed. Like I said in the introduction, this will allow the 52 units on the 1.6 acre site. The residential unit sizes range from 1,000 to about 1,600 square feet. The commercial space is about 1,000 square feet on the ground level. It consists of 117 subterranean parking spaces for the residents and the visitors and the commercial retail. And the variance was for the retaining walls, over six feet, to create the actual access easement. Here's an image of the proposed ten-to parcel map. The proposed elevations will be consistent with the existing Seacliff condos, which originally was called Renaissance Terrace, which is located just west off Costa Pacifica Way, where they share the same driveway. The building design is a contemporary-type architecture. And here's some images of the elevations. So when reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following, it's compliant with the zoning regulations, in terms of development standards. The proposed development will enhance the property as well as its neighborhood, complies with the general plan, provides additional housing and commercial opportunities for this area, and this time extension would allow the property owner the additional time to complete the project. So with that, staff recommends that the Community Development Commission approve this project for the one-year time extension. The applicant is present, and they'll make themselves know. Thank you.
This would be the time for the applicant's presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is Ann Gunter with the Lightfoot Planning Group. Our address is at 5900 Pastor Court in Carlsbad, and I am registered in accordance with the city's lobbyist regulations. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant for this project, and I'm not going to add a whole lot to Scott's presentation, I think he covered it pretty well. I do want to let you know that the applicant has diligently pursued getting through the final engineering and building permit process, and in essence, they have all of their plans ready to go. Their building plans, their grading plans, their erosion control plans, their structural plans, their landscape plans. But at the end of the last year, there was an opportunity to have this property be combined with the adjacent parcel that includes the main attraction, and since that has sort of long been a goal in developing this area of the site, they wanted to basically put this process on hold a little bit to see if they could accomplish that joint effort. That application is on file with the city and starting to go through review, but we'd like your extension to allow that process to go forward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. There is no public. I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. One question, Ann. Does this project still have all the cool bicycle features that I got so excited about?
Yes, it does. It includes the bicycle storage, as well as the connections with the bike paths. We actually enhanced some of the bicycle storage in the area, and also, one of the discussion points from CDC last time was that it would be really desirable to have a roof deck, and that was part of the substantial conformity application, was to find a way to accommodate that as well.
And the bicycle shop, where you can go in for the residents to fix your bicycles, and-
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
No, I was very happy to be able to go to the site and have a conversation, originally, when this originally got approvals, and to talk about the future, hopefully the plans they've been working on for, I think, what, 20 years or something? Hate to say, 20 years haven't passed by, right? It was just yesterday. But anyway, so I'm happy to move adoption of the resolution. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I, you're referring to the project that we're actually extending the time on, but there is a greater good there, I think, with the big project that-
Got you.
-that will be very, will be very fortunate to have. So I second that.
Please vote.
Motion passes by vote.
If we go to item 54, please. How many do we have?
Eight. The first speaker is Dirk Akkema, followed by Wally Stevens.
And my name's Dirk Akkema. I've been a 30-year resident of Oceanside. I'm going to read most of this, just so I don't omit something. I'm here to announce the formation of a citizens advocacy group, which has recently been formed to work with city officials to sustain Oceanside, to create sustainable Oceanside beaches. SOS Oceanside, Save Oceanside Sand, held our first public meeting Monday night at Bagby's, attracting many interested area residents whom were concerned about our eroding coastline. We are mobilizing a social media effort to bring attention and support to protecting our beaches. I do want to read to you our mission statement, that is on our brochures here. SOS Oceanside is a local group of advocates for sustainable Oceanside sandy beaches. Working with local, regional, and state authorities, we will encourage the city to design, approve, fund, and construct groynes to protect and preserve our beaches. Groynes, by the way, are short, narrow, jetty-like structures built to the water's edge to prevent coastal erosion. The fortified sandy beach can be Oceanside's best tourist attraction and will protect property from storm damage. Community support or mission is essential. Recently, our group took a field trip up to Newport Beach to speak with locals and to survey the groynes that they have had in place since the 1960s to protect their beaches. Our findings are impressive. Area surfers, as it turns out, prefer to surf at the groynes because they create a special, very consistent, even a larger break than they would normally expect. Also up there, the beach has grown to over 100 meters, 100 yards wide, which is very impressive. I mean, you can hold a football game out there on their beaches. No significant erosion has occurred during the severe winter storms due to the fact that the groynes actually reinforce the beach and prevent the currents from sweeping the sand away. Also, the wide beach provides a buffer to protect public and private property, and it also provides a great area for visitors and tourists to enjoy the local areas. Also, in speaking to the lifeguards there, they claim that the groynes prevent dangerous currents, rip currents, from sweeping people away, and they say that the swimmers naturally avoid the rocks so that they don't encounter any hazard to swimmers. This has led us, with SOS Oceanside, to recommend that a series of groynes be built in Oceanside to protect and preserve our beaches. We are suggesting that the city consider groynes at Tyson Street, Wisconsin Street, Oceanside Boulevard, Buccaneer, and St. Malo beaches. I'm almost done. We hope the city council will embrace this very critical effort to save our beaches and protect our tourist economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I've been absent since March. I have a business license in the city of Oceanside as a public advocate. Sophie Joe's, I've been informed tonight, has a lawsuit filed against them by the city of Del Mar. I will check on that tomorrow. Staff has been doing their best to try and negotiate with this corporation and the adjacent property owners. David Kemp, when he was business license director, required that, went out and looked at people's business licenses. Everybody who conducts business in this city, be they a shopping center, a car wash, or anything else, has to have a business license, and I know Sophie Joe's has one. But the fact being, that they have to be held accountable. Sophie Joe's has been in violation of the CUP on many, many, many occasions, as in documented in the public information stuff I have. It's time for them to find another location or scale it back to a reasonable amount of business. They're shooting for 1,200 cars a day, and that's, they've screwed up every business in there, has a hard time getting their customers in and out. And there are young women from those apartments who are being intimidated by the big wonderful trucks that my wife would never let me have. Guys, just, I'm waiting for a vacuum lady, you don't tell me to move. So you need to get off your duffs, for an expression, and get it now. I know that you were elected by the people of Oceanside, but as I look at some of the financial disclosures, I find that you seem to be leaning more toward the out-of-town people who donate to you. You work for the city of Oceanside, the city employees of the city of Oceanside, my family's all gone. These employees are my children now, and I'm going to protect them as best I can. I'm not going to take any more time. I'm going to say Happy Father's Day to yours, appropriate, and most of you know me well enough to know that I'm like an old Marine Corps bulldog. Once I bite, I hold on. Okay? Thank you.
The next speaker is Nick Ritchie, followed by Kelly McCormick. Nick Ritchie, followed by Kelly McCormick.
Good evening, council members, mayor, deputy mayor. My name is Nick Ritchie. I live at 133 Sherry Lane. I'd like to thank the council for including $1 million for sand replenishment in the city's budget. Of course, of the 3.7 miles of Oceanside coastline, we now only have approximately 1.8 miles of sandy beach, and that is where the sand will go. This loss of beachfront is a recent event, one that needs addressing. Our advocacy group, Save Our Sand Oceanside, believes we have a viable solution. As was previously mentioned, we held a meeting at Bagby's last Monday night. The energy at that meeting by the attendees was positive and hopeful. Everybody there viewed sand replenishment as temporary and fleeting. They know a more permanent solution needs implementation. SOS Oceanside sees groynes as a sustainable, environmentally sound method to restore and protect our beaches. Currently, we are seeking business and citizen endorsements. While we have a good number of endorsements, we know the list will grow. These people, these businesses, know that their quality of life and their businesses depend on healthy beaches. Already, Visit Oceanside receives numerous complaints about lack of sand from the visitors to our city. Sand is vital to the economic health of this city. Again, we took a trip to Newport Beach, groynes in place, 56th Street to 28th Street. We were amazed with the width of the beach and the consistently excellent surf. The neighboring communities have never viewed Newport's groynes as a problem. We hope the city council will embrace this very critical effort to save our beaches and protect our tourist economy. Thank you.
I'm Kelly McCormick, and I'm here tonight because I'm the parent of two teenagers. I run a youth mentoring program, and I'm an active school, sport, and scouts volunteer. I'm telling you this because I've seen a lot of wonderful success stories among the teens I come in contact with, many of whom have just graduated from high school and will be heading to college in the fall. Sadly, I've also seen kids who have gotten derailed by drug use, dropped out of sports, changed friend groups to hang out with other kids who are using drugs, and seen their grades and commitment to their education fall by the wayside. Many of these kids begin vaping nicotine, then move on to vaping high potency marijuana, which has serious negative consequences on their brain development. Our kids are bombarded with messages from the pot industry portraying the drug as harmless, fun, and even good for you. Unfortunately, it's a message many are believing. A new study by the Rand Corporation reveals that young adults living in neighborhoods with a higher density of medipot storefronts have higher rates of marijuana use than peers without medipot shops nearby. In addition, teens and young adults who live near the stores and who are exposed to medipot advertising and store signage have more positive views about the drug. This study included almost 2018 to 22-year-olds from Los Angeles. Living near the medipot stores also was associated with the use of marijuana on a greater number of days over the past month. These kids likely are unaware of the numerous peer-reviewed studies demonstrating that regular marijuana use by those under 25 increases the likelihood of mental health crises, such as paranoia and anxiety, psychosis, schizophrenia, and suicidal ideation. It raises their risk of drug-impaired driving, poor grades, and worse performance on tests of IQ, short-term and long-term memory. As parents, city leaders, and a community of caring adults, we must put the welfare of our young people ahead of the profits of the marijuana industry, and we must take an honest look at the unintended consequences of commercialized marijuana. Thank you.
Good evening, council, and Ann, Mayor, honorable mayor. First of all, kudos and thank yous for the near 24-hour improvement of accessibility on this page right here. It used to be a garbled mess, that you couldn't hardly find what you were looking for. It's pretty good. It's still kind of confusing and hidden to the JQ public person who's looking for how to address council before a meeting. This is titled "How to Address Council at a Meeting." And I'm talking about the digital position slip for an agenda item, which is buried, I don't have the right glasses on, but it's buried further down there. So that, keep going, let's improve on that, that's better, let's go further. Also, could we please not, couldn't we broadcast council workshops? We could do that. There's a lot of important decisions that are being made there, and public is, doesn't, I mean, unless you show up, you don't know what's going on. So that's number two. Third one, about the September 4th workshop, about the charter and possible amendments and four topics that were included in the motion. It seems impossible to me to address and solve only those four charter workshop items in one workshop. Plus, those who were also, that were also mentioned by council regarding AIDS, yes or no, and how to maximize public input. So please consider for that workshop, the first action item to be a charter commission. Let's recreate the charter commission for the city to make recommendations to council about how to upgrade, update, reboot our charter, and address the four phases of what it is about the council. Campaigning, the election, time in office, and when one has to resign. There's four phases that could be addressed there. Staff is super busy. Let a commission do that work. And then back off and let it happen. Let the public input and that commission make the recommendation. And lastly, big thank you for making that workshop at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Publicly accessible to the working public, two thumbs up. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Honorable Mayor, council, can you guys read that? It's a little sloppy. Cindy Rocco, South Oceanside. And what I wanted to talk about today is let the public know, that we, and the council, that we have a group called Represent Oceanside, and that we've been working for about a year in going through and defining a vision and a mission and goals, et cetera, and we've been working and researching on those, and it will be actually very timely for the September meeting as well. And our vision is governance you can trust, and that can really encompass a lot of different variables. And we will be meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Saint-Tropez on the 101. And just come early so you can order food. And then if you're interested, you can just contact me at cmrocco@cox.net. And then also, one of the issues that we do deal with, and we are actually working on this right now, is ethics. And I wanted to show something, and I wanted to see if we can include this, if it's, I tried to search for this policy and could not find it at all, even with Google going through the city website, but maybe because they were doing modifications, I'll give it that I just may not have been able to locate it. Basically, with the state and as a local governance, we can actually have more restrictive controls on a local level. I may not know them all, so I defer to Mr. Mullen, but I believe that if this doesn't exist, that it should exist. It doesn't have a date on it nor anything, I don't know context, it was something that I randomly came upon, because you know I'm reading everything, and I think that it should also include any sort of administrative to council, anyone that is under a council supervisory role as far as performance evaluations, et cetera, et cetera. I think that because it's not within the domain of our human resources and regular staff, that there should be parameters as well included in that. So I don't know if there already exists a document, and if there isn't, we should have one. I would make it, ask council to also include that in on the workshop. And if it does exist, steer me in that direction- And if it does exist, steer me in that direction, and then if we can have a -- take a look at it and review it if we consider from a public to make it stricter, and also to include any sort of non-HR FTEs or employees that are employed by third floor. Thank you.
The last two speakers are Ellie Walton, followed by Fabio Marchi.
Hi, Mayor Weiss. Hi, Mr. Mullen, and hi, council members. Good to see all of you. I'm here to talk about Fabio's project at 2030 Broadway and the decision by Chief Robinson to not allow the Corzon pipe to be installed for the underground application. And sorry, I'm usually the behind-the-scenes person. I don't speak out in public, so I'm just a little bit nervous. But so I'm just going to read. Fire Chief Robinson wrote in denying the pipe, said, "As fire chief, I find no clear exception for its use according to NFPA Title 24 and/or the Fire Code." So we contacted the chairman of NFPA 24. He's the chairman. He's the head. And he wrote in an email, he said yesterday, "I'm the newly --" and this is Bob Caputo. He said, "I'm the newly appointed chairman of NFPA 24 Committee, and I've also been a member of NFPA 13 Installation Committee for over 21 years. NFPA 13 allows materials or installation that are not specifically listed in Section 1.5, which states equivalency. Nothing in this standard is intended to prevent the use of systems, methods, or devices of equivalent or superior quality, strength, fire resistance, effectiveness, durability, and safety over those prescribed by the standard." He says, this is the chairman of NFPA, "I have reviewed the listing of this material and find that it is, in fact, listed for use in underground installations. In fact, the installation guide includes specific instructions for trench and berry requirements." He goes on to say, "The chairman of NFPA says, 'The documentation clearly shows this material to be of equal or superior strength over Schedule 40 CPVC, which is listed by UL for this purpose, up to three inches diameter, this is two and a half inches, but is still subject to the acceptance of the local AHJ, the authority having jurisdiction.'" Fine. So I sent this on to the fire chief, Chief Robinson, and I said, "Look, smoking gun here," you know, basically what I said. And he said, he replied, "As fire chief and AHJ, the decision to not accept the Corzon pipe for underground application of FPS stands." So I'm wondering, my question is why? We have the head of the NFPA. Remember, the reason in the letter from Chief Robinson was because it didn't comply with NFPA. We have the head of the NFPA saying, "Hey, the pipe's fine." So and the goal of the fire department, isn't it to save lives? Why would we want to replace superior pipe, according to the NFPA, with inferior pipe? That's my question. Why would we remove superior pipe for inferior pipe? How would that save lives? Thank you.
Council members, my name is Fabio Marchi, and I'm here today because as an engineer, I'm a engineer contractor in California. I'm a general contractor, AC contractor, AWS welder certified. I'm an architect or technologist. But my only defect, my biggest defect, is having English as my second language. So I'm ashamed of that, very, very ashamed, because when I communicate, people, they shut down their ears. And I have the proof right there that I've been discriminated and I've been judged wrongfully by the rotten apples of the City of Oceanside, that I read letters from Gandhi. He says, "If a chief is protecting the corrupt and the rotten, the chief become the same or worse." Well, dear chief, you're here with all my respect. I know you're a senior. You're expert in taking people out in and out of fires. But right there, it is the proof that my listing materials are approved by UL, and you can see the comparison of the pipe, the gray pipe. It's a thicker pipe, bigger pipe, and they want me to put that pipe that you can buy in Home Depot. The chief, the chief is not acting in his proper criteria as a technician. He's not protecting life of citizens. He's putting his ego and his pride defending the fire department. That is wrong. I asked him if he was able to put over the counter approval. He said, "Oh, we don't do that." That's a letter from Ann Bland, that I don't know for whom she works, because when I asked if she was a city employee, I was told that she's not a city employee. She's an independent contractor. When I asked for whom she works, they said that's private information, and I was kicked out, kicked out from the fire department for the first time. Second time, I got kicked out for that gentleman over there, person that I'm sure, John, you told him not to talk to me. But it is unbelievable the way that you guys are treating me. And enough is enough, guys. Michelle, you are part of this because you don't take action, and people that don't take action, I already said what Gandhi says. So the house is a mess.
Address the entire council.
Yes.
Address the entire council, please.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, but I'm a little bit emotional because they're messing with my employees. All my employees, they got laid off. They don't get a salary. They don't get, they don't have money, all because there's incompetence from somebody who doesn't want to admit that, look, it says right there, "Over the counter." You can read it. It's from Etruchet. Why they didn't give me the truck? They put me for a fire sprint.
Please wrap it up.
No, I have to say that. They put me in hold for seven days to make a test. That's ridiculous. And I'm sorry for this, but there's no other way to talk to you, to anyone.
Thank you, Fabio. Your time's up.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to item 55, which is a request by myself to make appointments for the various committees and commissions, and I will move approval of those.
Second.
We have a motion and second.
Motion passes. Five oh.
At this time, we'll go to item 56. Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We held the public hearing on this item last Wednesday, as you know. The council gave direction. There was a motion to introduce the ordinance with various amendments. Those amendments were agreed to by the second, and our, by the maker of the motion, I should say, and were read into the record when we introduced the ordinance. So I'm going to go ahead and title the ordinance, and then I'm going to make some brief comments before I assume we have members of the public wishing to speak. Okay, so this is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 24 of the Oceanside City Code to create permit requirements for and to regulate short-term rentals. So very quick comments. You have two versions of the ordinance in your packet, and the reason for that is because there was a little bit of confusion with respect to one of the additions to the motion last week, and that deals with Section 24.6, subsection B. At the council meeting, there was discussion to prohibit short-term rentals that were served by a Panhandle access that does not meet city standards. Those standards, by the way, are set forth in Section 1050 subdivision Y of the zoning ordinance. So I added into this ordinance, and then it was prior to its introduction, a sentence that said, "Short-term rentals served by a Panhandle access that does not meet city standards set forth in Oceanside zoning ordinance 1050Y or other applicable zoning ordinances are prohibited." There was some confusion as to whether pre-existing short-term rentals that were basically lawfully in operation prior to that date could be grandfathered in. And so that specific language, though, was not used in the motion. The motion was that we would prohibit these short-term rentals that are served by substandard public, I'm sorry, Panhandle accesses going forward. And so I wasn't clear if that protected or was meant to protect or allow existing short-term rentals that were registered by the city or with the city's finance department for a TOT certificate prior to that date or not. So I've given you the option to include that language. That's in version two. So version one, to be clear, is the straight prohibition that short-term rentals that are served by a Panhandle access that does not meet city standards would be prohibited. Version two includes the grandfathering language that I just addressed. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we turn it over to the public.
Before we go to the public, I'll go to Councilmember Rodriguez. I will be recusing myself from this vote. So let's go to the public.
The first speaker is LeAnn Mellon, followed by Stephanie Hendrick.
How many are there?
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and City Council members. My name is LeAnn Mellon, and I was born and raised in Oceanside, and I live at 1733 Down Street, where my family brought property there in 56. I was one year old, so I'm a 64-year resident of Oceanside. I am and have been a very happy Airbnb super host for five years now, enjoying one of the best experiences of my life. I understand that I am in compliance, but have a very big concern for other Airbnb hosts who live on Panhandle lots and rent their homes to vacationers and who have had no issues or problems with their guests or their neighbors. As with most non-hosted STRs, STRs on Panhandle lots largely do not create a problem. The individual problems need to be dealt with fairly, swiftly, and permanently by code enforcement, paid for by TOT, collected by complying and soon-to-be complying STRs. Fairly meaning not to punish those who have had no issues versus restricting all on Panhandle lots. I am for capping, but may I suggest that non-problem compliant property owners who currently enjoy the freedom to rent to non-problem compliant guests be grandfathered in. Many of these residents who enjoy sharing their home and city with vacationers from all over the world are depending upon this income in retirement or just to cover the high cost of living in the place where many of them have lived all their lives. And let there be no mistake, not one of us would ever consider renting long-term as we also share these rooms with our, and guest houses with family, friends from out of the area when they visit.
My name is Stephanie Hendrick. My address is 1858 Laurel Road, Oceanside, which is a residence on a flag lot in the Fire Mountain neighborhood. Honorable Mayor, council members, and everyone, just two days ago, my good friends and neighbors, Fred and Amy Harned, who operate a hosted STR on a non-conforming flag lot, alerted me that their ability to operate a hosted STR through Airbnb might be in jeopardy. I think we can say that hosted STRs are a special category of STRs. By and large, hosted STRs are operated by folks who love their homes and want to share what they have. As I read through city documents, I came to understand that regulations for STRs were being created for the purpose of minimizing potential adverse impacts on neighborhoods. Well, every action in life carries an inherent potential for adverse impact. But with a hosted STR, even with a hosted STR on a non-conforming flag lot, there is a built-in vested ownership interest in things running smoothly and to the benefit of the STR operator. Hosted STR operators don't want problems. Regulate these operators, yes, but please allow them to operate unless they have broken the law. In honesty, I'm here to testify for my friends and neighbors, Fred and Amy Harned, who operate Serenity, a hosted Airbnb on a flag lot. They have not broken any laws in the running of it. Operating Serenity is a joy to them. They have acted in good faith, following every regulation, and if your vote allows, they will follow every new regulation willingly and to the best of their ability. I'm here to testify that Amy and Fred are just one of so many hosted STR operators on flag lots, to which this desire to operate lawfully and willingness to cooperate fully with regulation can be assumed. It's true that parking can become cramped on our flag lots. As homeowners on these lots, we deal with parking challenges by being considerate of each other, and we have not had a problem after many, many years, not a single one. We offer our spare parking to each other as needed. We work it out. Apparently, photos of parking along a shared easement were passed to city council members who were told that this parking was due to an STR. This is not the case. Once a month or so, one will find extra cars on the easement due to a gathering of some sort. Our neighborhood is friendly. But as far as STR parking, Amy and Fred remain certain that their STR guests park in the designated parking space, which is in their own private driveway.
Please wrap it up.
Wrapping up, please allow these STR operators, these hosted that have already had something in place, to continue running. Thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Amy Harned, followed by Fred Harned.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Amy Harned, and I live at 1842 Laurel Road, and my husband and I have a hosted Airbnb. My next-door neighbor was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but requested that I share this letter that she sent to the council. My name is Kathleen Beagle, and I live next door to Fred and Amy Harned. I am a mother of a 14-year-old daughter and 12-year-old son. I was informed by them yesterday that a mother of small children was quoted as objecting to their Airbnb due to the fear for her children's safety. I just want to make it clear to this council that I do not feel that way about Fred and Amy Harned's Airbnb. They are very kind and responsible neighbors, and I trust them to keep our neighborhood safe. They talked to me about their Airbnb when they started it and assured me that they would never rent it when they weren't in town to monitor it. I have lived next door to them for over eight years, and I trust them and have no objections to their Airbnb. If you need anything else from me, please let me know, and I will be happy to help in any way. Thank you, Kathleen Beagle. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time.
If you could please hold your applause. Thank you.
That's my wife. Good evening. My name is Fred Harned. I live at 1842 Laurel Road. I've been a resident of Fire Mountain for the last nine years, and I'm the owner of a hosted STR at our home in that location. I'd like to share with the city leadership tonight my perspective on clause 246B, proposed to restrict STRs on properties with non-standard Panhandle access. My comments refer only to hosted STRs, which at this point are included under this clause, but which I believe should be exempt. I should start by saying that I understand that non-standard Panhandle access is a real and important issue, and I'm absolutely fine with addressing it within the STR ordinance. Public safety is one of your mandates, and of course, it must be managed. My request is that the ordinance created is not written so broadly that it damages the interests of citizens that do not the interests of citizens that do not pose public safety or nuisance threats. Most of the STR ordinance separates out hosted from non-hosted STRs for good reason and rational balance of public interests. I believe that same logic applies to the considerations addressed under clause 24.6B on panhandle lots, and there's no prevailing reason to lump hosted and non-hosted STRs together for this one issue where throughout the remainder of the document, they're treated separately. I completely concur that issues of parking and good neighbor policy should be abided by at all times. I also believe the city has enforcement policies and personnel to correct those situations where city policies are not being respected. Guests at hosted STRs do not generate more traffic or parking than a young adult child living at home or any other family house guest, which obviously, the city does not regulate as a special circumstance, but rather uses the existing enforcement policies to manage. My chief point is that hosted STRs are not generating sufficient problems to be lumped in with corporately-owned STRs and should not be inordinately punished. Any brief or thorough review of the online comments left by the guests of our hosted STR will quickly reveal that their favorite element was the peace and tranquility. They don't come to our neighborhood to disturb the peace, they come to enjoy the peace, to share and respect the very thing that makes our neighborhood precious. Hosted STRs serve to strengthen the income of retirees, enabling them to remain in their houses, and promotes the stability of neighborhoods. It generates income from the city and requires very little investment in new services. I request that the language of 24.6B regarding panhandle lots to be adjusted to exempt hosted STRs as they're treated throughout the rest of the ordinance. Thank you for taking the time today.
The next speaker is Julie Brown, followed by Donna German.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Julie Brown. I live at 1464 Ridgeway Street. I've lived at that address and next door for forty years. We host a short-term rental, and we do live on the property. We have never had a problem. When we built our home, we included six marked parking spaces, including ones for our family. So we have absolutely no parking issues because we provide more parking than is necessary for a rental. We've never had a problem. There's never been a complaint. We do depend on this income. Both my husband and I are retired now. We could do that once we started having an Airbnb. If you do take it away from flagpole lots, I will have to go back to work because we will not be able to support ourselves. There has been some problems, I understand, but if code enforcement did respond to a complaint in a timely manner, those could be avoided. I have not had real good luck with code enforcement, so I could know why other people have not I just would like to have the hosted, owner-hosted, short-term rentals, to be exempt from this flagpole lot. Thank you.
Donna German, followed by Carolyn Keith.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members. I think it's imperative that we put a cap on the non-hosted, at least for right now. We know the city has a lot of work ahead of them, just getting everything implemented, making sure that these homes are compliant, making sure all the rules and regulations are in order. You have a lot of homes out there. Now, we know in the coastal area, once you vote on this, it still has to go to Coastal Commission. It's going to be a wild, wild west of people, investors, trying to get homes to get in under the deadline. If not, the city was saying, oh, we want to come back in a year. In a year, there can be a lot more short-term vacation rentals during the time that city is scrambling, trying to find out if the ones we even have right now are legal. The one concern I have with the hosted is, are they really going to be hosted? Yes, there's a lot of, you know, good places out there, and people are there when their guests are there. But I've also heard people up here talking about, oh, I rent a hosted one, and not tonight, but I have a hosted one, but then they go out of town, you know, sometimes. So they can still get ahold of us by phone. So there's got to be some way of regulating that, too. But definitely, please, please, look at putting a cap on the non-hosted. This could be a disaster for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Keith, and I am the host of a hosted Airbnb on a flag lot. And as I, it's my first time at a city council meeting, and as I sat here tonight, I was impressed by the fact that almost everyone coming up and speaking was speaking about the growth of Oceanside and tourism and bringing people here. And yet, this particular conversation is about shutting down people who are doing exactly that, and I'm one of them. As you can see, I'm a senior, as so many of us hosts are. We benefit the community, and we benefit the community in many ways. One is our eleven-and-a-half percent tax that we pay. I've been in the Airbnb business for a little over a year, and we have paid tax from the beginning. We benefit by bringing people into Oceanside. Sometimes there are people who are coming back, they grew up here, sometimes there are people new to it. We benefit the restaurants. We also, I don't know if you know this, but I personally and Amy, who spoke earlier, we went rent one room out of our homes that we've been in for many years. We benefit lower-income people, people who cannot afford to go spend $200 or whatever it is to stay in a hotel. So we get a lot of senior couples, we get young couples, we get a lot of moms who are coming here to visit with their wonderful sons and daughters who are at Camp Pendleton. And so, we provide a service in that way. We also, as has been said before, provide that service to ourself of having extra income so we can stay in our homes and so we can continue to enjoy this beautiful city that we love so much. I've never had a problem with my Airbnb. We live in the house, the room is in the house, and I do feel that when something happens, it needs to be enforced, that the code has to be enforced. But where you don't have a problem, I don't see that things should be shut down where there isn't a problem. The person who brought this complaint owns several rental houses that are on a flag lot. If Airbnb and the short-term rentals are banned from a flag lot, why would this person be allowed to rent full-time cars going in and out on a daily basis if short-term rental isn't going to be allowed? Let me just point out, I know my red light came on, that our occupancy for my type of dwelling in this city is ten to fifty percent in a month, depending on which month it is.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, thank you so much.
The next speaker is Richard Courier, followed by Arlene Hammer Schmidt and Cindy Rocco.
Honorable mayor, council members, my name is Richard Courier. I'm a proud homeowner, thirty-five years in Oceanside. My house is ninety years old. I'm not sure about its conformity with the flag lot regulations, but my wife Carolyn has been eloquent in expressing the extreme responsibility and care that we exercise in our short-term rental business with Airbnb, which by the way, we've had now for two years, not one, and we've never had a problem. My neighbors are the best neighbors I've ever had in my life. I've lived in New York, Minneapolis, Berkeley, California, and many other places in the United States, and these are the greatest people. We have two Airbnb businesses on our little cul-de-sac, and we've never had a problem with anyone. I do agree, and I also want to express my appreciation to Mayor Weiss and to Deputy Mayor Feller for responding to my correspondence, also to one or more council members whose calls I missed this afternoon, and for that, I apologize. I want to bring up the issue of non-hosted short-term rentals because this is a problem that many municipalities have faced across the United States, and it's been a big subject of discussion in San Diego, and I believe that they have instituted restrictions. If you own a home or a house and you don't live in it, and you rented out a whole house to a group of people for a weekend or a few days, yes, they can throw a big party and disrupt the neighborhood and perhaps create a problem. But those of us who are living in our homes, who are opening our own homes to guests, qualified guests, whose driver's licenses and background we can access through Airbnb are responsible, we cause no harm to anyone, and we should be allowed to continue. Flag lot, no flag lot, conformity, no conformity, it's not relevant. What's relevant is that we are not in any way a threat or impediment to anyone's health, safety, or happiness. Thank you very much.
Hi, Arlene Hammer Schmidt, Rurlish, Fire Mountain. The short-term rental disease is epidemic from I-5 to the ocean. It's time to put a quarantine on that area, in my humble opinion. Quarantine from I-5 to the ocean and with a one-year moratorium, no more, unless it's in the pipeline, just shut it down. As a previous speaker mentioned, let the city catch up with what the heck we do have. Get it real. In the meantime, if the rest of Oceanside starts to look like the area of Oceanside between I-5 and the Pacific Ocean, we're lost. We're going to be, I don't want to live here anymore. Now, regarding the flag lot situation, you all received this in an email. In our situation, my address 2390, it says my house is right there. The red lines on the paved easement are the width of the easement that services eight homes, eight. Ten and a half feet is the narrowest. My whole part of my flag lot is twenty, which I imagine is probably non-conforming. I don't even, it doesn't even matter, I have front street access anyway. However, that is the safety problem, public safety issue, that Mr. Feller brought up. That's the place where the van got stuck. It's not the flag lot that's the problem, it's the width of the easement that is the problem, and that is not addressed, as far as I can tell, in any version that you have in front of you. So, my question was, how will either option one or two affect or change this situation? Are my neighbors up the hill eligible for short-term rentals because they don't have flag lots? And yet, this is still a public safety issue. I think we missed the mark of the problem, in my situation anyway, our situation. That's it. I think we can do better. Try amending it again. Thank you, everybody.
Honorable mayor, council, sorry I'm speaking so much, but some of these items are very important to me. First of all, thank you, Shannon, for, I didn't get a chance to say it once I threw that video, you know, like, for the, whatever, you know what I'm talking about. So I put some cookies over there, but no one knew who they were from. Anyway, my apologies for that. Anyway, I think that, you know, it's awesome that when it's a primary hosted unit, like, I adore LeAnn and Jim, like, they have a great place, and they have plenty of parking, and then the other young lady over there that also provides extra parking. I think that that is the kind of thing that supports our economy in maintaining our ability to pay for our mortgages, et cetera, and also have disposable income so that we can pay sales tax. Anyway, it's all win-win. One of the things is, I apologize for not sending this to you, I was wondering if on the sign that we could also put down how many people are allowed in that unit, if it's an LLC. The real owners and real persons must be disclosed, not a short-term manager. It could also be included, but I think it's really important because when you backtrack code violations, you're going to want to know if somebody is under an LLC or different, you know. I think it'll improve the tracking as well. And, okay, and code enforcement number if I didn't say that as well. And I think that anybody that has over one, instead of at the five, that it should be getting a business license and also paying taxes, et cetera. I think that, oh, apologize. Oh, when we do the preliminary, I think a soft cap on the number of short-term rentals, and there should be, at least until we review it, but anybody that's grandfathered, when we go in there, we should go in as soon as possible and do a preliminary code inspection. And I think that anybody that has a code violation should no longer be grandfathered because obviously, they've been operating under those conditions, and I think it's really important to make sure that there's not a reward for that, because there are a lot with code violations, and they should lose that privilege. Also, there's one issue that's really happening with a lot of our neighbors on the Pacific Street, with one particular owner that owns about ten percent of our short-term rentals, eighty-five, and I think that that needs to be addressed directly through the mayor council. You guys have to address that because that's huge impacts down there. And there's one owner that owns beachfront rentals, and these guys, four thousand a day, et cetera. I think that something needs to be done from this governance to help to ease that neighborhood's impacts because it's really heavy. And I know this person-
Please wrap it up.
...a quarter million dollars in just the basic tax. If you have more than two units, you should also be paying the hotel tourism tax, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Rocco.
Thank you, Mayor Weiss.
The next speaker is Sherri Mackin, followed by James Hoffman and Linda Walshell.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed regulations of short-term vacation rentals. I'm speaking against it for four reasons. First, the impact short-term rentals outside of the coastal zone have on affordable- First, the impact short-term rentals outside of the coastal zone have on affordable housing stock. Vacation rentals are driving up rents, renters are subsidizing short-term vacation rentals, and residents' quality of life is impacted, lacking of parking, lack of parking, increased traffic, and having strangers for neighbors. Second and third, there's no cap on short-term vacation rentals or the requirement to have hosted units in the proposed policy. When will enough be enough? It doesn't surprise me that AB 1731 is making its way through the state. Residents have had enough and are looking to state legislators for help. The only problem is, the bill will push more vacation rentals into our R1 neighborhoods away from the beach. Lastly, there is nothing in the policy about non-compliant real property and renting such properties for vacation rental. For example, I have a notice from the City of Oceanside that the council member who has recused from voting on this item tonight due to a conflict of interest made before building renovations on his property without required building permits. Instead of fixing the property before he sold it, he was issued a certificate of noncompliance on the property on October 18th, 2018. It reads for unpermitted construction, including conversion of kitchen to new full bath, new electrical, plumbing, and other improvements. The case number is noted. Since selling the property to an investor, Rodriguez Company took over managing the now vacation rental. How did council member Rodriguez slip through the cracks? Here we are almost a year after the issue of the certificate of noncompliance, and not even the new owner has brought the property into compliance. All the while, Mr. Rodriguez Company continues to manage this short-term vacation rental. Does this put our city at risk knowing that a short-term vacation rental is being rented out that is noncompliant with regards to building standards? How will you track offenses like this and seek compliance? Please do not approve the proposed policy this evening. It needs more work. We need to have something in the policy to protect us from unpermitted house flipper work. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Hoffman. I own several short-term rentals. I pay multiple five-figure taxes on these rentals. Sorry, I'm a little nervous to speak in public here. And I have, I have two issues with this regulation. One, you're proposing a fee to help you process and administer this money. You collect two and a half million dollars for this money, and now you want more money to help you collect, to count the money that comes in, or I'm not exactly sure why you would need another fee to, I wish I had your problem, where two and a half million was coming in and then, you know, you would get a fee from the guys that are paying it to you. Secondly, I don't, I think this regulation overreaches on what you're trying to accomplish here because, as my understanding is, there's parking issues, there's also issues with regards to, you know, neighborhood disturbance. How is home inspections addressing those issues? I'm just kind of curious, I don't know if you guys answer questions about that, but how is that related to the problems that are being reported here? And I certainly understand, I would hate to have neighborhoods ruined from, you know, noise and parties like that. I've never had a complaint on any of my properties, but, you know, my main two issues are, you guys get a lot of money so, from our operators, so I don't know why you want to try to get more money from us for giving you that money. And then secondly, how are, I understand the issues, but I don't think that this ordinance or whatever you call this is addressing what you want it to address. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Linda Walshow, 200 North El Camino Real. I'm here to thank you guys for voting to ban the short-term rentals in mobile home parks at the workshop, and I wanted to bring to your attention some of the feedback that I've received from mobile homeowners in the process. One of the concerns is that how the rentals in the parks are not being appropriately reported. It's one thing for the ones that applied for a license, and we know who they are, that's easily dealt with. It's the people that didn't apply for a license, and I'm getting calls from several of the parks that are reporting that homeowners, well, actually, I can't really even call them homeowners, there seem to be investors. Let's just say an individual comes to a particular park, and through a different type of purchase agreement, they're calling them storage agreements, they're being allowed to buy as many as three homes at a time. And the residents are telling us in certain parks that they're using one as a rental, they may be staying in one at the time while they're working on the third one as a flip, but it's all the same individual owning three of these things. And then if you compare the list to the data that the parks file with the city every year, those spaces are merely getting reported to the city as a rent-controlled space. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. I don't know how you can address that any more effectively, but I do understand from conversations with council that there is a service that monitors the people that advertise on Airbnb, but I'm a little bit more concerned that people are buying these as investments when they should be going to people that need a rent-controlled home. So thank you for your time and attention.
The next speaker is John Taylor, followed by Connie Page and Kimberly Faust.
John Taylor, 1848 Laurel Road. I have no issues with my neighbors. This is a health and safety issue and a liability issue for the city as well as myself. This ordinance was introduced to me, I was 23 years old, I was doing a land development project for the first time, the city engineer was Ronald Beckman. I said, "Mr. Beckman, I got an acre and a half, I got two lots, I want to go to three." "Sorry, Mr. Taylor, your entrance is too narrow, it will overburden the road." So I'm speaking to Item B, serving three houses or more. It is a 28-foot dedication with 24 feet of pavement. Okay, so what you're seeing here is the entrance to my easement, where it bottlenecks down to 15 feet. Nonconforming, six houses, no fire hydrant, no turnaround. What you're seeing here to the right is where it's done correctly. 28 feet of dedication, 24 feet of pavement meets the city standards of 1050Y. This is 1750 Laurel Road when the subdivision is done correctly. This was done in 1994, it goes that far back. So what we have here is 28 feet of dedication, 24 feet of pavement, we have a fire hydrant up here where it belongs, and a hammerhead turnaround. This is done correctly. These people could have an STR on their property and not put anybody into any kind of a liability situation or the city. What we have here is where I live. We have six houses, our fire hydrant is clear over here. I was talking to Dave Parsons yesterday, and he was shaking his head when I was giving him the numbers of what the footage was to get back to my back-corner house. So in closing, here's where the burden becomes. First, if you guys allow STRs on a private easement, we all have to agree to a new road maintenance agreement. It probably has to be completely redone, there's at least $1,000 in lawyer's fees, and then all six of us have got a lawyer up and figure out how to agree to a new contract. Second, insurance. If you allow an STR house to operate on a nonconforming easement with co-ownership, they have to have a commercial insurance policy that shows us as additional insured in case there are any road imperfections, giving an STR guest a reason to sue, okay? The third thing is that whether it's hosted or unhosted, it needs a discretionary permit so that we can look at if they're violating anything in 1050Y. It needs to be to width, it needs to have a turnaround, and it needs to be looked at by planning, engineering, and the fire department. Thank you.
My name is Connie Page. I'm a Fire Mountain resident, and I want to appreciate, I want to tell you I appreciate this time in front of you. I want to say special thanks to Esther Sanchez and Jack Feller for personally coming out to my property today to see some of the challenges that we have been facing. We appreciate your serious consideration to our needs and concerns regarding short-term rentals and the need to have those on a panhandle lots properly regulated. We bought our house three years ago, looking forward to the private drive right here. This is our house, to have the privacy that we liked and, you know, with, you know, a secluded backyard. Our experience with the property across the street, right here, has been nothing but misery. We have, the party started Super Bowl weekend and really haven't stopped. We have called the police out. Some of your children may have been at the high school party. There was a snowball party in February with three high schools, hundreds of students drinking, having sex in the driveway of the property, used condoms found in the driveway of my property and my neighbor's backyard. The police were called, the kid wouldn't open the door, the police had to turn around and leave. So our experience has been atrocious with the amount of cars that have been parked in there, up to 10, so six cars parked in on the property and cars parked on the easement. People can't turn around, there's no signs, there's no light, there's no red stripe. We really, really strongly feel that you need to limit, prohibit, whatever you got to do to enforce 24.6 without grandfathering short-term rentals in panhandle lots. Private road agreements, I'm totally in agreement with John, the additional insurance. My biggest question is, if you guys allow short-term rentals, whether it's panhandle lot or not, who's going to be code enforcement during after-hours and weekends when all this stuff goes down? And who's the additional police that are going to be coming to the noise complaints instead of handling proper police calls? So I think you need to pass version one, specifically 24.6. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and council members. I too, my name is Kimberly Faust, and I've been a resident of the City of Oceanside since 1972, and my husband and I moved into Fire Mountain off of Fire Mountain Drive five years ago, which lies on a nonconforming panhandle easement with a private driveway that we share with two other single-family homes, and this is my house right here. These properties were built in the late '70s and do not conform to current regulations for panhandle access, and currently the width varies at some point anywhere between 18 to 20 feet being the maximum. There's no turnaround point, there's no lighting, there's no fire hydrant. We chose to move to Fire Mountain from south though, to live someplace that was peaceful and solitude and where I would feel safe because my husband travels. I've reviewed both versions, the proposed regulations for short-term rentals that the city is considering this evening, and I'm happy to hear that you guys are recognizing our issues with the nonconforming panhandle lots and easements. Currently, the quality of my life has been ripped underneath me. I lie awake in bed, listening to loud music of strangers, the parties of high school students being allowed access to rent out a short-term rental and consume alcohol and have sex, and the unknown cars, sometimes six to 10 at night, coming and going throughout the wee hours in the morning, driving up and down my private access road, living in fear if I ask someone to keep it down and them retaliating against me. Just so you know, there is no turnaround. Their turnaround that they are doing is my front yard and their headlights go directly into my bedroom window. The way our lot sits, if someone was to get mad at me and run up to me and confront me, there's no place for me to run. I can run to the back of my house, but that's going down a whole nother street down avocado and a cul-de-sac. If you look at that picture of that lot, you can see where my bedroom window is, it's right here, right there. The people in that house drive all the way down into my window at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, and I am home alone. That is not what we chose to live for in the City of Oceanside. I love this place, I've lived here forever. We have had a eucalyptus tree fall in our house in 2016. The fire department was unable to drive the fire engine down that easement because there were cars parked along the side of that wall. However, it's our responsibility to put up the proper fire lane signs and the lines, and we can't have cars towed away, and if we do, it's going to be at the owner's expense of us, the homeowners, not the car rental person. Thank you very much for your time.
The last speaker is Todd Wash.
Good evening, my name's Todd Nash, I own property in Fire Mountain. Almost everyone that's been up here tonight has spoken on this item, has used the term host or hosted. The term host or hosted is a real problem with the STR regulations. The regulations state that a host is an owner or a tenant. So when people keep talking about host, they're not necessarily talking about the owner of the property. The regulation does not require that the host be a party to a joint use agreement for shared resources like panhandles. The regulations define host, but then the regs don't even use the term. If you read through the regulations, it's defined, but then it doesn't get used. It talks about third parties or parties, but it doesn't use the word host. At least I haven't been able to find it. There isn't any requirement that the host actually does anything in the regulations. Until there's clarity on the requirements of a host, the restrictions need to be tighter and not looser. The version without grandfathering is the responsible version, since there is no ability to guarantee that someone with accountability to the others that share the panhandle resource will actually be on site.
To come back to the council, Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we, can we put a cap on hosted or non-hosted? I mean, is, I suppose we could probably do just about anything, but...
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, yes, you could put a cap. The Planning Commission had recommended a cap on all short-term rentals. Am I mistaken? Effectively, it was a cap because there was no new short-term rentals, I believe, in residential zones, so it's effectively capped by those that are already allowed. Do you want to respond to that?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Feller, City Council. The Planning Commission did place a recommendation that any new non-hosted short-term rentals would be prohibited in residential zoning districts excluding the RT district.
Thank you. And just for clarification in the record, the term hosted unit is defined on 24.2, and then is used in 24.4 because hosted units are exempt from the permit and operational requirements of the ordinance.
We definitely have... We definitely have a public safety issue. I visited yesterday, I think, we got a, I think Shannon sent us something, or sent something that I got today that said you thought there were about 40 short-term rentals on, or no, 40, 40 panhandle lots in Fire Mountain, Loma Alta, and I drove every street. Am I wrong?
Deputy Mayor Feller, we estimate about 15 short-term rentals that are located on panhandle lots, but again, that was a very rough estimate. I would need to work with our GIS team to get a more accurate number.
I was going to get to that. I knew this was not the final number, because you didn't mention Henny Hills, and there's probably 20, at least 20 over there. I drove literally at least 40 of these, every driveway, whether it was conforming or non-conforming. And there are some very seriously non-conforming driveways on our, on our, on these panhandle lots, so. We do have public safety as an issue, I think is probably one of the things that strikes me on this, where the liability could fall back on the city if we have 700 feet, or 300 or 400 feet to the end of the panhandle and no, no way to put out the fire without pumping from the truck, so. We also, I think we learned, or I learned today, that we're not going to issue any permits, or do start permitting until November 1st? Is that, is that correct?
Council members, that is correct.
Okay. So for me, this has really been a controversial issue, because I think you've seen here some of the actual great people that seem to know how to do hosting, but the, the example that is at 2385 Fire Mountain was really, it really stuck out to me, because, and I have, I had a senior graduate this year, and I'm almost positive he wasn't there. In fact, I go out on a limb and I'd say I'm positive. So this has been a controversial issue for all the community. I believe, what I've seen, I, I think the council's gonna, whatever they do, somebody's not going to be happy, so. I, I think, as we go forward, we need to look at how hosted and non-hosted work. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the version of, version one of the ordinance. The staff has previously been directed to report to the council in 90 days on the status of the various issues related to the implementation of the ordinance. I would like staff to add that list, add to that list, a briefing on how many STRs are currently out there in utilizing substandard panhandle access. My motion also directs staff to defer enforcement of Section 24.6B, the section prohibiting STRs with substandard panhandle access until November 1st. This is the day, as I said, we'll be issuing permits. And during that time, I would like us to look at the hosted, non-hosted, if that, if that is a possibility that we can, because we are going to evaluate a lot of things, I believe, between now and, and that 90-day period being up, so. I think we give the current users a little grace, the STRs some grace to get to that point, and then it'll be on staff and probably the community to figure out what might work for, whether it's a hosted, if it's something we have to come back with in a year, I don't know. But, but for now, this is, is the motion. I met some of the kindest people I, I think I've met in my time with Amy and Fred. They're, they're just great people, but I think we're finding that the bad apple is, is causing a lot of grief, so that's my motion.
Mayor Sanchez?
Thank you, I believe the, so the motion is to adopt version one, and I'm going to second that motion. I know that the motion also includes quarterly reports, that was what we discussed during the workshop, and so that's still going to happen, is that correct? So the city manager's nodding her head, yes. I had a chance to go out, I actually have had, got stuck once on a, on a flag lot several years ago, and it was pretty discouraging to me to have to wait, and, because I didn't know who it was, who was parked, you know, I was, I was actually visiting, and it is really, really frustrating, and if there were something wrong with someone in the house and they couldn't, you know, get either the fire, fire emergency vehicles in or get a car out, that would be extremely very bad. It would, it would certainly be an extreme thing to happen, just, just because, you know, we can't handle this on substandard streets. This is actually, in my mind, in going, in going around the city and looking at some of these drives, they're really driveways, private driveways, and when you say "private," and we call it "public easement" in the sense that, you know, it's for electric and, you know, city requirements, the general public is not actually invited on these, on these. They really are private, they are not maintained by the city, there has to be an agreement, and quite frankly, each one owns a right, a portion of that, it's, each one is a property owner who access off of that. And unfortunately, these are not, I don't believe that the intention was ever, and we looked, and I understand there was past, the past practices, or at least what people thought, is that you can't have this kind of situation on a substandard driveway. That was what people generally understood, who were especially being impacted, and it is a frightening thing to think that some, you know, something could happen and you would not be able to get assistance. Every second counts, I've had, I've had, I know of a lot of situations where that happened, where every second counted, every minute, and I would not be able to feel comfortable knowing that I created that situation. So I am seconding this motion, I, I thank everyone for talking with me. I did also meet with, with Fred Harnett, and expressed to him my concerns. So I think going forward, I do have, at the workshop, I was for supporting the recommendations from the Planning Commission, but I am anxious to hear what happens in, in the quarter and see how it works going forward. My concern has been, from day one, the balance, ensuring that we have housing stock, as well as, you know, we, the city is benefiting, I believe it's $2.49 million from TOT. We still have a lot of them that are not registered, which is, you know, another thing that's very concerning, what potentially 400, 500 not registered. So we, we're going to have one code enforcement officer assigned to this, and we have made arrangements for having response from the city until 10:00 PM, then after that, it's the police department. We heard tonight that even when we call police and we call code enforcement, issues continue. And every person should be able to enjoy the, have the quiet enjoyment of their property. That is a right, and I believe, and for me, that's pretty much a constitutional right, and unfortunately, that's, that's being violated. So I'm, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kine?
I'll be very brief. I, I'm also going to support the motion from Councilmember Feller, but I'd like to make sure, see if we can address some of the more egregious issues in that time period. Is there any way we could have the police department contact some of our speakers tonight, so we can immediately start addressing the serious problems with parties and safety issues? And I know from experience that there are ways to address that, we can contact the property owner and hopefully bring some relief to that problem immediately while we work on the finer points of the regulations. So thank you again for everyone coming out tonight.
I would just like to say that I appreciate everyone's comments, and particularly some of the folks I had talked with earlier today about the hosted and non-hosted short-term rentals. I will say that, as was mentioned earlier, there are a few bad apples that are spoiling it all, and I think a lot of those, whether it's on panhandle lots or just in the residential areas, are actually the non-hosted units. With the, whether this ordinance, as it sits today, is adopted or not, there are provisions in place now, right now, we have no regulations whatsoever, this will at least establish some regulations. If there are parties going on and there are complaints, if they're egregious, the short-term rental permit can be revoked initially. If they have three strikes, it's going to be up for a hearing to revoke. So some of those issues eventually are going to go away, because as, if those parties continue, they'll have their permits revoked. My concern is adopting something tonight that essentially prohibits entirely the short-term rentals, whether it's hosted or non-hosted, on the panhandles. It's, to me, it's easier to have the regulations be a little more broad, and then rein them in as we move forward if they need to. By making a strict prohibition now, to me, it's unlikely that we'll ever loosen those restrictions. So for that reason, I will not supporting, be supporting the motion. So we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes 3-1, Mayor Weiss voting no, and Councilmember Rodriguez recusing.
So with that, we will be adjourning to our next meeting at 3:30 on Wednesday, August 7th. Have a good July, everybody.
July.
I add one thing, if I might. The Oceanside Fast Pitch Girls softball is going into the state playoffs, and they have a GoFundMe page, katgabea@fastpitchoceanside.org, if you want to get involved with that.
Thank you, and with that, we stand adjourned.